We might be a minute early. I think we're good to go on this. Ms. Whitby, if you will call a roll, please.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor, not here yet? Wait, I heard him. I heard him. So he's near.
There he is.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
McCormick is present, sir.
Thank you. I invite you to rise for the prayer and pledge to be led by Alderman Witcher.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather, to indicate our feelings and to go forward and do the business of our city. Thank you for those who are serving in our military and their families who stand in wait. Thank you for our volunteers who are with us tonight and helping guide them over the period that they're with us. In thy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes in the special call from the previous meeting, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? Yes.
You know, Murray, you mentioned in your prayer about our military. I'm glad to announce that our Assistant City Attorney, Daniel, has been deployed for the last year, returned home, safe and sound, I believe Friday. Amy, Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, so he is back in, gonna take a few weeks off before he comes back to work. So we're certainly glad that he got home safe and sound. Let's do a special call, Ms. Whitby.
Special call. This is an email dated Friday, May the 5th, 2017, to members of the City Council. Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:05 PM on Monday, May 8, 2017, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-1791, amending resolution number 9194 regarding the authorization to sell property located at 2013 Share Street in the city of North Little Rock to care link of North Little Rock to include properties located at lots 7 and 8, Block 8, Share subdivision, sponsored by Mayor Smith. R-1792, endorsing the installation of a ropes course in Emerald Park, sponsored by Mayor Smith. O-1738, vacating and abandoning a portion of Randolph Road northwest of its intersection with John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, sponsored by Mayor Smith. I've also included a proposed amendment to O-1737 that clarifies the current and proposed tax rates on lodging. O-1737 amendment and ordinance amending Section 98-36 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, Chapter 98, taxation regarding lodging taxes. This is pursuant to Section 248.2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code and was sent to all council members who responded.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and call each, or you can get them done, and then we'll go to our proclamations and presentations.
First item, R-1791, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution, amending resolution number 9194 regarding the authorization to sell property located at 2013 Share Street in the city of North Little Rock to care link of North Little Rock to include properties located at lots 7 and 8, Block 8, Share subdivision.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any questions on this? We just, by accident, didn't include all the property that was there. And if they hadn't started removing the asbestos in that, they are really close. And so I'm really pleased with this. So we're just adding these to what we should have originally done two weeks ago. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1792, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution endorsing the installation of a ropes course in Emerald Park.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions or comments?
When will it be open?
Mr. Hartwig, when will it be open?
Open March.
Of next year.
Yeah, next year, because we gotta go back now to get approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig.
Look, we're looking at probably next March. We're gonna have to go back and do an RFP to advertise for the best qualified person. With that, it's gonna probably take another month. With that, the season's out over, so I look for next, early part of next year to be open. And you could be the first one to go down, upside down.
Will this be at the same level that you talked about before?
Yes, sir, it sure will. That's, we've gone, so you know, we've had to go through what we call environmental clauses. We've had to write the federal government to build some buildings, as Mayor and I've talked about. With all that, we've passed everything now, and now we've got to just go back and do the RFP. We thought we were doing it right, but things changed, so.
We'll be the first ropes course in central Arkansas, right?
As far as central Arkansas, we will be the first. I think there are some in Hot Springs. These people that we've talked to before have had them in state parks, but we'll go back and, but yes, it should be one of the longest and best. And this is at the top of Emerald Park. And of course, there would not be anything, as far as the bike trails will still be open, the walking trails will still be open, because we'll be above it the whole way. So it would not be interfering with any of that. Yes, sir.
I think there's other ropes courses, but there's no zip line, I don't think, in central Arkansas.
I know there's one in Hot Springs, Mayor, but as far as...
Zip line?
A zip line.
Really?
But that's, if there's some others, I'm really not familiar with it. I guess when we can put 100,000 people, you know, around them, they're really happy about that. Yes, sir, Charlie?
Well, I know you and I have visited last year down there, and in fact, I wrote with that same person this morning. He asked the same question. We're still wondering about any conflict with the people that are currently, that are using the trail currently and the people that are gonna be using the ropes course. And I see and hear that no bid will be accepted without approval by the North Little Rock Parks and Rec. And I'm assuming no plans would be approved either. Is that correct?
I'm gonna bring everything back to the council, of course. I think we need to cross that due diligence with the bikers and the joggers and the walkers and everybody. But the way we've got it lined out now, there is no conflict whatsoever. It's just as far as people coming in, we'll probably separate the road and the bike trail by a good distance and separate with ballards or something. So again, everything is as usual, just got a zip line and a rope course now.
Ross?
We were provided with some maps that we'd requested. Can, do we amend these maps into that so that we'll have it with us when we go back to look for it?
I can either attach them or you can formally amend them, whichever, whatever your pleasure is.
Your pleasure.
Formally amend them in. That way we know they're there.
How about a motion, a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend in a map, all those, well, on the roll. Call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption, as amended.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? Ordinance O-1738, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of Randolph Road northwest of its intersection with John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
How about a motion to suspend?
Motion to suspend the rules, place it on a second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of Randolph Road northwest of its intersection with John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of Randolph Road northwest of its intersection with John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Everybody know what we're doing here. Basically, where they were gonna put a gate up was on the property line, and everything was fine, other than there was fiber right underneath them. So they had to move the gate out about seven feet. And so thus, they're picking up a little bit more of our street, but that also means they maintain it. On the motion, no, we don't have a motion, do we?
Yes. Oh, no, sir.
How about a motion to adopt?
Come in.
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
The other item on the special call is on the regular agenda. Did you want to wait until then to call the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Communications?
Please.
You have one through six.
Move.
Anybody wanna pull?
Two.
Two? You wanna pull two?
And...
Okay. How about a motion to accept?
Just summarize number three. I don't want you to have to read all of it.
So two and three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. How about a motion except one, four, five, six, and seven? Is that right?
One, four, five, and six.
Come in.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. I guess we can do that, can't we? Okay, pull number two.
Number two is an editorial that we received today from Alderman White. It's an Arkansas Democrat editorial from Sunday. It is a letter to the Democrat from Kit Murphy, the widow of Fire Chief Jim Murphy. And she's basically thanking the city. And in the last paragraph, she says, "The city opened its arms to us and made us part of the family. I've never seen a city as warm and welcoming as North Little Rock, including the smiling and cheerful Kroger clerks. And so I thank you. I feel blessed to have come here so my husband could serve and thankful that we made it our home." Kit Murphy.
Some kind of special lady Kit Murphy is. How about a motion?
Maybe accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And number three is an email that I received from H.C. Hank Klein. It is regarding Cash Maxx at 4700 John F. Kennedy. And it is an email informing us that Cash Maxx had closed and that he references the Attorney General's position. He references Senator Ray Port's assistance and just goes on to talk about his efforts regarding that business.
And he was a strong force behind that, too, and we certainly appreciate his energy. How about a motion?
Maybe to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay, let's, Sandy, are you out there? Come on up. Sandy Decourcy is the executive director of St. Joseph's Center, and she's got some really special guests, and we wanted to recognize them in the program at St. Joe's. So take it over, Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna thank Alderman Height and Witcher for allowing us to get put on the agenda. And again, to let you all know that St. Joseph's Center is the old former orphanage up on the hill on Camp Robinson Road that St. Joseph's Center of Arkansas, a nonprofit, took on back in 2010 to try and restore and revitalize it to serve the community. We're very happy today to have a special group of folks with us here that are helping do just that. So real quick, I just wanted to let you know that our mission continues to be to preserve and restore the historic place, to produce sustainable farming and food production, and to educate and teach through agritourism and community outreach. We have a little tagline we like to use. It's called Farm Life, City Living. So it's about the only 63-acre plot of land here in the city limits that allows us to do actual farming, thanks to the variance that was provided by the city. And we continue to grow and expand on that. Would love to have you come and see. We have several gardens, Hunger Relief Garden, Pollinator Garden, Community Garden, Sculpture Garden, chickens, and an apiary for bees. So all of those have been made possible through grants through your Fit to Live programming and city beautification programs. So we're so thankful about that and hope you feel that we've put those to good use.
Excuse me, Sandy, go back one slide if you can.
Okay.
Okay. I don't think the general public has seen your sculpture up there.
Oh, yes.
So you might talk about that.
Surely, we will. One of the sources of revenue for St. Joseph's Center is the leasing of space to artists. We have seven artists currently in residence there, one of which is Kevin Cressy, who's a North Little Rock resident, a well-known sculptor, and is a gift to St. Joseph's because his parents, in fact, met there as teenagers, going to carnivals on site. And his uncle Matt happened to live there for many years as an elder orphan at the facility. He wanted to do something to give back and created this incredible sculpture of Saint Fiocra. He chose that. I'd never heard of this saint before, but he's the patron saint of gardeners. So he created that, and it greets you as you come up the hill into St. Joseph's. Okay, with that, I'd like to introduce the AmeriCorps NCC leader, Nicola Jones, who's going to introduce her team and let you know a little bit about what they've been doing.
Hi, I'm Nicola. I am the leader of this wonderful group of strong 18 to 24-year-olds. And we're here serving with Sandy at St. Joseph's. We got here at the beginning of April and here until the beginning of July. So during our time here so far, we've been working on several different projects, helping to sustain and help St. Joseph's grow. Some of them have been the community garden, just helping plant and build this memorial garden for one of the community gardeners who's passed away. This demonstration garden, we used old pallets to build a garden bed. We're helping to clean the farm stand and get it ready for the upcoming season, during which we will be helping out on Saturdays, helping the farm stand run. We got chainsaw trained, so we're clearing invasive species. We helped paint a new chicken coop and restore an old rabbit coop into a new chicken coop. In the Hunger Relief Garden, we harvest over 3,000 pounds of radishes that went to the Arkansas Food Bank. So that's us with the radishes at the food bank, which we got a tour of. And then we've just been planting a variety of different crops and plants throughout St. Joseph's and also at the Hunger Relief Garden for the Arkansas Food Bank. We've been doing different controlled burns and chainsawing to help clear pastures, to give the animals, the cows, the room that they need to grow. And then we've also had the chance to serve along the other community members of North Little Rock. This was our Earth Day event. We served with Comcast, and also City Year was there. So we are here until the beginning of July, and we're really appreciative of Sandy and St. Joseph's welcome, as well as all of North Little Rock.
Well, we're certainly glad that y'all are here and making a special place a little more special. Would you like, and can you introduce your team and have them come up and so we can get them on TV?
Sure.
I'll come down there, if you'll introduce them, and have them come up, and we'll get on the TV, okay?
Sure.
Y'all stand right there in the middle and look.
So we are AmeriCorps NCC. We're Earth Four. We're from all over the U.S. This is Kevin Tony. He is from Washington, D.C. And then there's Cassie Frink. She is from Georgia. And then we have Kyle Jankowski. He is from upstate New York. Then we have Liam Templeman from Worcester, Massachusetts. And then we have Michaela Hansman from Indiana, Brittany Westmoreland from North Carolina, and then Hannah Weckel from Philadelphia.
Thank you all.
Yes, with your permission, I'd like to leave these flyers over there by the table.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm gonna leave some flyers about an event coming up on this Friday called Let Us Grow, then let you know that our farm stand is opening for the season on Saturday. So please stop by and grab some fresh produce. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, for all the hard work that you do. It's a wonderful place. If you haven't been out there, I encourage you. It has changed a lot in the last two or three years, no doubt. Okay, I have the most wonderful honor to sign a proclamation today proclaiming May the 7th through May the 13th as Municipal Clerks Week. And I would like for Clerk Whitby to tell us what this is all about.
Well, so municipal clerks, this is an occupation that we represent people from around the world. There are 14,500 members of our worldwide organization, International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And this is something that started many years ago, providing recognition to some of the people who work behind the scenes. Municipal clerks are often known as the hub of the wheel in city government. So if you go, especially to the smaller communities, and maybe you can't find someone in City Hall or in the Town Hall, you'll find a municipal clerk who can usually help you get the job done or direct you in the right way. So this is just a way to pay recognition to municipal clerks around the world and here in our city. And I wanted to request this from you for my staff, Kaitlin Thomas, Shelley Osree, Tiffany McGraw, and Becky Taylor.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna get a chance to make a photograph of the group, and you're gonna send this off to National?
Yes.
Great.
Well, thank you very much.
We appreciate you being the leader of that national group, too. Okay. On the Stone Links deal, do we need to call public hearing on that, Amy?
Yes, sir.
Yes? Okay, I'm gonna call public hearing on Stone Links. Yes, we're probably in the right spot to do that. I think everybody understands what we're getting ready to do. We're getting ready to undo what we did a couple of months ago. So this process will start all over if the, if the Stone Links group chooses to. So the podium is open. If anyone wants to come up and say anything, they certainly have three minutes and are welcome to. Seeing none? Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Please identify yourself.
My name is Maria Mitchell. I live at 13301 Faulkner Lake Road. I am honored to be here to abolish this because our neighborhood has really come together. I met so many wonderful friends and neighbors that I never knew, and I've been there for 11 years, by going door-to-door, talking to our neighbors, and helping them understand what was going on and helping them to have a voice in this. And they found out that this was very important. They stood together. They had a voice. They signed our petitions. We came in with over the number that we needed to void out this ordinance, and we are so happy to come together as a neighborhood, so.
Keep it up.
Yes.
Okay, keep it up. If we can do something that makes you mad again, by golly, we'll be able to make your neighborhood better, we'll do it. But no, this made sense, and we're certainly glad that we can start all over on this thing.
I have one more thing to say. We do have a sinkhole in one of our streets, and we're trying to come together on who's responsible for fixing that sinkhole. And it's right in the private drive that comes up to the houses that are on Faulkner Lake Road, and that's the only way you can get to your house. They were saying that it would be the city's responsibility if it was behind their houses, but there was a golf course behind their houses. So...
Chris knows about it. He'll brief me on it.
Okay.
So I think we're aware of it.
So we're coming together about that, too.
Good. There is power in numbers, I assure you. Okay, I'm gonna close that public hearing, and let's go into unfinished business.
R-1772, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution approving an interconnection agreement with L'Oréal USA.
Do we need to amend in Exhibit A?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
How about a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion to amend in Exhibit A.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt as amended?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Consent agenda. Anybody wanna pull a consent agenda? Okay, so that's 86, 87, 88. All those in favor of consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
And Mayor, Timothy is here.
Tim's here. Where's Tim? There's Tim. Thanks, Tim, for agreeing to serve. Tim is an attorney that located here, going to Clinton School and decided to go to law school, and he now lives on Skyline Drive. Yep. And he's agreed to be on our Board of Adjustments. And I thought there was no better way to break him in than put him on a board with Tom Brown and Carl Jackson. So they'll break you in the right way, Tim, and thank you for agreeing to serve. Thank you. And of course, Isaac, we knew all that was coming, and the other one's TAP program. So we're good to go there. How about new business?
R-1789, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution accepting the low bid and authorizing the mayor's city clerk to enter into a contract with Redstone Construction Group for the 2017 asphalt overlay program appropriating additional funds.
I noticed that we added $16,000. Our guess in our budget was $500,000, and this overlays 516. So we're...
Motion.
All right, Murray, motion. Who moved? Who's second?
Second.
Questions, comments? On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1790, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of loans to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
How about a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on grass-cutting expenses and abatement and other nuisances, seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes, sir.
Amy? Yes? Okay, I'm gonna call a public hearing on Stone Links. Yes, we're probably in the right spot to do that. I think everybody understands what we're getting ready to do. We're getting ready to undo what we did a couple of months ago, so this process will start all over if the, if the Stone Links group chooses to. So, the podium is open if anyone wants to come up and say anything. They certainly have three minutes and are welcome, too. Seeing none? Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Please identify yourself.
My name is Maria Mitchell. I live at 13301 Faulkner Lake Road. I am honored to be here to abolish this because our neighborhood has really come together. I met so many wonderful friends and neighbors that I never knew, and I've been there for 11 years, by going door-to-door, talking to our neighbors, and helping them understand what was going on and helping them to have a voice in this. And they found out that this was very important. They stood together, they had a voice, they signed our petitions. We came in with over the number that we needed to void out this ordinance, and we are so happy to come together as a neighborhood, so.
Keep it up.
Yes.
Okay, keep it up. If we can do something that makes you mad again, by golly, if it'll make your neighborhood better, we'll do it. But, no, this made sense, and we're certainly glad that we can start all over on this thing.
I have one more thing to say. We do have a sinkhole in one of our streets, and we're trying to come together on who's responsible for fixing that sinkhole, and it's right in the private drive that comes up to the houses that are on Faulkner Lake Road, and that's the only way you can get to your house. They were saying that it would be the city's responsibility if it was behind their houses,